And here comes Mr. Drew and Will, so we're all present.
Mary Kennedy didn't retire? Alex, Mary Kennedy didn't retire?
I could do that if you wanted to.
Page 12.
I thought she retired.
We could start at seven, I think.
Maybe not.
We, I have, I brought that up in the past prior to you, and I'll just leave it as that, and that was shot down nicely, so.
Well.
I know, new time.
New day.
New day. New day.
Fresh and new.
Oh, it's.
We will talk about it.
Oh, my goodness, this is another one of my students.
Hello, Steve.
Hello.
All sparkly.
Sparkles on?
Do you have a problem with the change of time, if it went to seven?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah. A lot of my customers are in western time zones, and I tend to. Pencil on four. Make calls.
Oh, yeah.
And so I just get, you know, I'll sit around without any calls, and then five o'clock, six o'clock, seven, I start.
Well, we'll talk.
On the other hand, I mean, you guys do what you want to do.
Sometimes when we get into the winter months, the earlier times, it does seem to be better. But we'll talk about it, we've got time. You're good? You're good? I'd like to call the meeting to order. And if we could take a moment of silence, please. Please rise for the flag.
Representatives to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members, all district schools, the Herald News, the Trends, the Record, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, the County Superintendent's Office, the Board Attorney, and Cable Vision of Warwick, and hosted in the Administration Building. Copies of the board meeting calendar resolution were provided to all local media, town hall, township library, and all district schools. Roll call, Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. Romeo.
Here.
Mr. Seidowitz.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Here.
Mrs. Swire.
Here.
Mr. Guarino.
Here.
Mrs. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Shinsky.
Here.
Mrs. O'Brien.
Here.
Mrs. Van Dyke.
Here.
Okay, we're going to have a presentation tonight by the solar power, in regards to the solar power purchase agreement.
Right, it's actually regarding the energy savings program that we're hoping to be able to participate in, if you recall, we've been going through this for about a year and a half, two years. And ESG is our energy consultant, and Greg and Chris are going to provide you with the summary of their findings, and if the board wants to proceed with the projects, what the details are going to be.
Okay, so tonight, after the presentation, we're going to be able to answer some, do some questions, that's why we decided to start the meeting earlier. So during, after the presentation, if you have any questions, we'll go over them, okay?
Anybody want this seat here? Do you want this seat?
Sure, I'll sit right there. I'll behave myself.
All right, good evening, West Milford Township School District, thank you for having us tonight, I am Greg Burns, a county executive for Energy Systems Group, and with me I have Chris Andrews, the lead engineer for the state of New Jersey. So really, thank you for having us, and like we discussed, we're going to review what we've done so far in regards to the Energy Savings Improvement Program, you'll hear regularly referred to as ESIP. So kind of going through the agenda, the ESIP overview, give you a little insight really of what our world is, go over the scope of work that we have identified and worked with district throughout the past few months, where we're at with the PPA and roof restoration, part of that we'll dive into, project summary and timeline. So really, for school district, there's three ways to fund capital improvements. One, bond referendum, you can see, has a little bit of taxpayer impact. Lease purchase is a second way, which also has a taxpayer impact. The ESIP is the only way a district can fund improvements, and that's funded through the energy savings as part of our project. So high level, so you can see here, there's three different, so before the ESIP, right, all that, that before column there, that's what you're spending on your utilities, and it's a general number, you're sending to your utility company. Once implementation of the ESIP were to occur, you still see you're sending some of that money to your utility company, because there's still electric and gas being used, just with more energy efficient equipment. So that is the blue part, that's paying for those upgrades with the energy savings. And then the green part, as part of the ESIP legislation, there is a little bit of excess savings the district will be able to realize. And then finally, post ESIP, and the payment for the upgrades are completed, the district will be able to realize those savings on a yearly basis. So that's really kind of the process, high level, now I'll turn it over to Chris, engineer, to get into the detail of the project.
So for me, I like to have my dessert usually before I eat my dinner, so I'm just going to hit you with a summary, and then we'll kind of dive into the meat and potatoes. So we started this process back in March, we went to every single school, we worked closely with Chris and his team, we opened every closet, we counted every light bulb, we found every single possible thing that we could find. ECM stands for Energy Conservation Measure, that'll be, I'll discuss a little bit more in the next slide. As part of this project, we evaluated 174 ECMs. Included in this $6.9 million sell price is 117 out of the 174 ECMs identified. Those have a total project cost of around $6.9 million. After the 19-year project term, the district will recognize over $9.3 million of energy savings, electric and natural gas. Incentives, rebates paid by New Jersey Clean Energy directly to the district, equate to about $131,000. And at the end of the day, the positive impact cash flow to the district over the 19 years comes out to almost $135,000. So what are we actually getting for that $7 million, right, that's probably everybody's biggest question. So here, the next slide, is a high level of some of the bigger ECMs or energy conservation measures that we're looking to implement. So the biggest one that really drives the energy project is the lighting. We're replacing all interior and exterior lights in every single building in the district with LEDs. Brand-new lights come with brand-new 10-year warranties. Essentially, the district won't have to buy another light for the next 10 years, covered in this project. The second big ECM or energy conservation measure is improved standardized HVAC controls. So these are your building automation controls. When you go into a space, 72-degree set point, the thermostat's on the wall. With the benefit of this is it also helps Chris and his team do proactive maintenance rather than reactive maintenance. Chris won't get a call and say, oh my God, it's 80 degrees in classroom 202 in Macapin Middle School. He'll be able to see from his system what's going on in each of the buildings at any time during the day. Another big ECM, which is really the kind of the meat and potatoes which is driving a lot of the savings, is the solar, the solar PPAs. So the PPA is a power purchase agreement. We've identified 1.3 megawatts over West Milford High School, Macapin Middle, Apshua, Maple Road, Paradise Knoll, Upper Greenwood Lake, and the bus garage. So at these buildings, three buildings were particularly identified, we're looking at roof restoration. So what is a PPA? What is a power purchase agreement? How does it work? Essentially, all it is, is a third-party provider comes in and pays to put solar on your buildings. Currently, you're paying around 10 cents, nine and a half, 10 cents for electricity. Easy Energy was the lowest parent bid. If they come in and implement solar in these buildings, you'll be paying around 4 cents for your electricity, so less than half. And all you're doing is basically letting them use your space. Three locations, Upper Greenwood Lake, Paradise Knoll, and Apshua, are in need of roof restoration. This roof restoration is about a $600,000 cost. So what is a roof restoration? What does this incur?
Total?
Total for the three schools, so a total investment of $600,000.
So $200,000 per.
The restoration, it's not a replacement, it's a restoration.
It's a restoration, to be clear. So what it is, it's a silicone membrane that goes on top of the roof. And you come, it gives you a 15-year warranty, so it will not leak for 15 years. If it leaks, they come, they repair it, they fix it. This is the entire roof that we're looking to do roof restoration, not just the spaces that we're looking to do solar. Makes sense? So what are the pros and cons of adding that cost into the PPA, or keeping it completely separate? That's why we're here, that's what we're looking to discuss. So what happens if we put that $600,000 into the PPA? So we bid this, and if we include that $600,000 in the PPA rate, it jumps to 6.59 cents. Essentially, the financier, the Easy Energy Company, they need to finance that $600,000 over the term. You're going to get a higher PPA rate, but you do get the same 15-year warranty on the roofs. If we take that out of the project, and the district pays for that separately, we're going to get a 4.47 PPA rate, still same 15-year warranty. So you're probably thinking, Chris, what if we just pay for the $600,000 or put in the PPA rate? What's the difference? By putting that $600,000 in the PPA rate, it takes project away from the overall ESIP project. So I ran some analysis, if the district pays for that roof restoration outside of the PPA, and you keep the lower rate of 4.47, you're able to get in over $800,000 of additional scope into the ESIP project. And you're probably thinking, how? How could that possibly happen? We're able to leverage the energy savings from those additional energy conservation measures to pay back over time, and it equates to almost $200,000 of additional benefit of paying for it outside of the PPA. So at the end of the day, what we're looking for direction from the district is, do you guys want to pay for that separately and do the roof restoration separately, or do we include that $600,000 cost onto the PPA provider and get the higher rate? That's essentially what we're trying to leverage. But again, the biggest selling point is, if you spend $600,000 to do three roof restorations, you're able to get $800,000 worth of additional work, whether it's additional building automation controls, additional unit vent refurbishment. We'll work closely with Chris and Barbara and the team to find out exactly what additional scope we get.
You can't do the solar without the roof restoration?
You can, I definitely do not recommend. Five years from now, if you have a problem on that roof, they typically charge you 25 cents a watt to pull that off, to fix the roof. So we're talking 1.3 megawatt, it's a significant cost. You might as well do it now, get it out of the way. Good question.
What happens after the 15 years? What is the savings after that? Or is the district stuck for restoring the roofs again?
No, so there's two things that you can do. The way that we bid is, we got a fair market value of the system, so the district can only enter into a 15-year contract with the PPA. So 15-year comes, you call the solar company up and say, take this off my roof, I don't want to deal with it.
And that would be no cost to.
No cost to the district whatsoever.
And we'll have that in our contract?
It's in the contract. The other option is, the district can extend it for another five years and get an additional benefit from it, or the district has the option to purchase the system and get 100% of the benefit. So there's three different options, completely up to the district, how they want to proceed with 15 years.
Prior to that, it's a lease?
So essentially, you're not paying anything. You're essentially buying the power from the company. So you would buy your power from the electric company regardless, paying the 10 cents. Anything that system generates, you're buying the electricity off of the solar on your own roof for less than half of what you'd be buying ultimately.
You're allowing them to use your space and.
To generate.
The difference is, the money, you're paying a lower electricity cost because they're generating, so that's.
Exactly.
What they're renting your space.
That's the lease, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. They're leasing the roof, and you're paying them back via buying the power from them.
Glad you invited before.
We have looked into this as a homeowner, so I understand a little bit of this, but I forget the piece like, so what's the benefit to the company that has the solar panels? Or putting, like, what do they get out of?
Tax credit. So there's a 30%, it's called ITC, the incentive tax credit, so they're able to take 30% of that investment, take it directly off of their bottom line. They also have a revenue stream over the next 15 years, because you're, we're going to be using electricity in the schools, we have to buy it from somewhere, you're just buying it from them.
That's partly why they have to own the system, not us. We don't get any tax credits as a school district, but if a private company owns it, they qualify for the ITC.
So they're also maintaining the system. So if the system goes down, that's on them. Chris and his team don't have to worry about changing inverters or broken panels, they're watching the system, because if it goes down, they're not able to generate revenue. So they're on top of that all the time, making sure it's working perfectly.
All right, so my question is, I know, we don't know what life will be like in 15 years, of course, of the, how technology is evolving, will there be any upgrades over the 15?
That's why you don't buy it.
Or what you put on the roof, that's what you're going to have for 15 years.
I heard the degrade, I'll apologize to that, too. So you're absolutely right. So typically, the way that they model their system is probably one replacement with, over the life of the term.
Over the life of the term, okay.
So that's on the responsibility of Easy Energy to do that. All of the calculations, all of the modeling that was done was based off of that system that they're planning on installing today. So 10 years from now, they may say, oh my God, a panel may come out, which is 90% efficient, and they can get so much more out of it. They may choose to come out and pay and do that, but we just, we can't guarantee that.
But that is a possibility.
Of course, sure.
Okay, all right. So if that happens, that's going to be at a cost to them, not to the district?
Exactly. You don't, we, there's no money out of pocket for the district whatsoever, except the roof restoration.
They would want the most efficient panel out there.
Because the more that they could generate, the more that they could sell. So the savings that it generates directly for the ESIP project is almost $2 million. So out of that $9 million total, $2 million is directly associated with the solar. So if we take it out of the project, we have to reduce that $7 million by probably $1 million and a half, $2 million, maybe even more because of those savings. And then conversely, if the district decides to pay for the roof work separately, that $7 million can jump to $8 million potentially, because we're able to leverage the savings from that lower PPA rate to get more stuff into the project.
I have a question for Barbara. Barb?
Yeah.
If we end up doing this, this is the only way we'd be able to get electricity, correct? We couldn't get electricity through any other means?
Oh, no, 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 no. That's not true.
Oh, okay.
No, this is, what they're doing here is, if we enter into the solar power agreement, then we're just getting the electricity at a lesser rate than we would be getting. We did a reverse auction, and we have a commitment for two years on a certain kilowatt hour.
Okay.
So this would just reduce that cost to generate a savings, and that savings then goes into paying back whatever financing.
For the loan.
We get to do all the other projects.
And the cost, the cost of, the savings is going to pay the cost of the financing?
100%. So that slide before, that Greg had shown with those charts, just go back there for two seconds, Greg. I'm going to, too much energy, just a standstill, so.
Okay. That's okay.
So just thinking that, this is, this is your electric and gas bill, this is what you're paying right now. So once we come in, we implement this project, this is what you're going to be paying to your utility company. This amount covers the loan, this is extra savings to the district. You're spending this amount of money regardless, say it's, say $100,000. All you're doing is allocating a certain portion of that to pay for this loan. So if you're spending 100, and the loan's 20, you're sending 70,000 here, 20 to the loan, 10 extra savings.
So there's a savings from the very beginning for us?
Yeah, it has to be. So it's minimal, it's only about $2,000 a year. The BPU, the Board of Public Utilities who governs the ESIP law, they mandate that you have to be a certain amount cash positive. It's a fluff factor. If, for whatever reason, something's too hot, run the air conditioning more, they want that fluff factor so you can still afford to pay the loan with no extra money out of pocket.
Do you have a list of districts that have done this that we can compare?
Absolutely, I could definitely get you there. Personally, we just did make 1.4 megawatts at Patterson, we did a little over 2 megawatts in Morris Hills, we just, Blombrings didn't have it.
Everyone got score?
We did not do a project.
I'd like to see the.
There are dozens, dozens that have done this, and they had a list of them in the book that was presented there, because we're not a.
Well, there's different groups, right? That, I mean, you're not the only group in the state, so.
Exactly.
We're not the only company that does these energy savings proposals.
But I want to see yours.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
So any questions with any, anything so far?
In that 800,000 that you're talking about, if we, if we pay out that 600,000, there are other projects that are within the scope of this, that we would be able to do more, do more of, is that?
Right. Basically, the list of projects that they're using to create this savings program can be tweaked. So if you experience additional savings, then you can, you can turn that money into doing another project that's going to create more savings.
So we identified 174 different projects we could do in that $7,117. So there's still room on the table to get more scope into the project, and we would work closely with Chris and Barbara to select those projects, whatever makes sense for the district.
Can you just, can you, can you just explain how if we're spending six, we get eight, but if we finance six?
Absolutely.
We don't get eight?
Because you're leveraging the additional savings. So by me coming in and putting $800,000 of additional scope, and say I do another boiler, say I do another chiller, say unit vents, there's energy savings associated with that, direct energy savings, there's energy rebates from the Board of Public Utilities. So we're able to capture that savings over the 19-year term, and that's how you get 800,000, by spending six. We're leveraging those energy savings to pay for that over time.
Perfect.
Whereas if you don't spend it, and you, and you decide you want to do it anyway.
We don't have those extra energy savings to leverage to get. So essentially, you're spending 600,000 regardless, you're either going to pay for it through the PPA, or you're going to pay for it through, just paying for it. By paying for it, you're able to get $200,000 more work by doing it that way.
Can I talk now?
Yes, I'm sorry, I have too much energy, I apologize.
No, no.
Well, that's the question.
You said you have other projects? You said 170-something?
Correct.
Okay, do you have a list of what those projects are?
Absolutely.
And are we, as board members, able to see what you?
Yes, absolutely, nothing, I mean, we were, we finished our energy savings plan, which has had every single thing that we've evaluated.
Okay.
So, I mean, we have no, I have no.
Debbie, I think what we need to do is, we need to let you know that Steve and Ray and Barbara and Alex.
Oh, okay.
Met with them, they were like a subcommittee.
Okay.
Who met with them and went, went over.
So that's been reviewed?
That's how we picked, yeah, that's how they picked the company that you're seeing today.
But it's a book, this.
No, no, I, no, okay. There's no clean notes?
But I think what Debbie's saying. I'm aware of the committee, I did not.
You want to see the 174?
Yeah, I think what Debbie's saying, though, is she's curious as to.
174.
What the 174 projects actually look like.
Sure.
Oh, okay.
What they are.
Yeah, that's what we talked about.
So there's lighting.
Yeah, so LED lights, kitchen hood controls, transformers.
HVAC.
Cooling tower, boiler replacements, building envelope upgrades, 160.
I say, like, the top 10 are, like, immediately. Yeah. Like immediately, the LED lighting.
So LED lights, the building automation controls, boiler replacements in Macapin, unit vent refurbishments, so there's actually eight schools with unit vent refurbishments, essentially leaving the shell, ripping out all the guts, and getting brand-new guts inside. So essentially, you're getting new, new unit ventilators at eight schools.
In all the, in all the classrooms?
In the classrooms, correct.
Yeah.
So the shell will stay, but all the interworkings will be completely brand-new. New controls, new control valves, you'll be able to actually, when it says 72, it's going to be 72, it's not going to be, you know, 90 degrees in the classrooms.
That's huge, and that's a big savings.
Could I recommend that maybe you make additional copies of the book that we got for the other board?
There's no, I don't, I don't need the book, I just, you know, if.
A list.
It's a list.
Understanding these projects.
Just a list.
Yeah, I don't, she doesn't need to see the book, because the book is just generic.
Yeah.
This is, this is district-specific, and we do have a list that we tweak.
Correct.
If we get a clean copy, we can share it with the board members.
Because I mean, it sounds nice, it's 178 projects, but I'm like, what are they? I mean, you're not, nobody's.
Hearing that was a big one.
That, see, like, it's very hard to visualize it until you start to say it, and then we know.
Exactly.
When you say every classroom, we know what we're talking about now.
You're giving us concrete answers here.
One of the choices was unit vent refurbishment versus unit vent replacement, and we opted for the refurbishment because you're getting all-new mechanicals at probably half the cost of the replacement. There's no need to replace the cabinets that they're in, they're fine.
Okay.
So that would be, one of the ECMs would be replacement, one of them was refurbishment.
Right.
So there's a lot of variables like that.
Exactly, so.
That makes a difference.
Yeah, exactly.
So there's 16 there, so you have eight refurbishment, eight replacement, so that's how the number gets a little bit higher, but yeah. The next one is additional cooling, so this is at Macapin Middle School Auditorium, we talked about the solar PV, and then the combined heat and power is CHP. So what that does, it's one piece of equipment that actually generates electricity for the building, and you're generating electricity through that electric generator, it's putting off waste heat. We're basically capturing that heat, and we're utilizing it to heat your building. So it's one, it's one piece of equipment that does both.
And where would that be?
At the high school. The additional benefit is, it allows you to extend your project funding. So a typical ESIP project is 15 years. If you have that CHP component, which we're putting at the middle, at the high school, you can extend the financing to 20 years. So that allows you to get much more projects by having that one piece of equipment. So it's a slim.
Well, that is a.
Yeah. Yes, sorry.
If we capture more energy than is needed, who profits from that extra energy?
From the solar? Great question. We size the system to be 90% of what your building will use. So we know exactly how much electricity each of your buildings needs. I know exactly how much electricity your building's going to use after I come in and put new LED lights, new boilers, everything. So that's the new baseline. I size the system to 90% of what that usage is, so hopefully, 90% of the 30% after, you'll never use more, so you use less than you do. The way that it's written.
Sort of it for our house, too, but we're not going to be there long enough to benefit.
You have to buy whatever that number is, so that's why we size it for 90%. We know that you're not going to not use it.
But if we don't use the 90%, who gets that extra?
The PPA. We size it to where that should not happen.
1.3 megawatts.
Did you have a, did you have a question?
I have a quick question, you want? The slide that shows the savings, the after, it looks like, I mean, there's no numbers, but that looks like it's a little more than 50% savings.
It's just, it's just a.
It's a graph.
There's no numbers on there.
Just an illustration to try and explain.
Good, okay. I wanted to make sure that that was it, because in my mind, I was like, that doesn't look, because really, it's only three buildings that we wouldn't have solar on that we own, other, you know.
Oh, no, the solar would be on all the buildings, correct?
No.
No?
The solar is not going on.
Some roofs it can't handle.
Oh, some of them can't? Oh, some of them can't?
Maple Road.
It can't go on, it can't go on.
Maple, he said.
Marshall Hill.
It's Westmufford High School, McApin Middle School, they're just carports, Absolut, Maple Road, Paradise Knoll, Upper Agreement Lake, Westboro.
There was a few schools that your architect had structural analysis done.
Yeah.
Didn't recommend sizing it, so we just.
Just eliminated them.
We just wanted to take it out and know, stay safe.
Okay, so then my question is, will we make enough to send to the grid on, so then there's only two buildings that, that we're using, that we own, that will not have solar. Could we possibly make enough on the other buildings to cover?
Great question.
Could we send enough to the grid that it would cover that also?
It's, it's specific to the site.
Right.
So the, the solar that gets installed at the high school will be used directly at the high school.
Okay.
Solar at the middle school will be at the middle school, et cetera, et cetera.
And so the extra, that really kind of leads off of Terry's question. The extra, then, is profited to the owner of the solar. We wouldn't be able to use that for our other two buildings that can't have it.
Correct.
Okay.
But those other two buildings are included in the cost savings, as far as.
They're, they're included in the overall project.
Right, okay.
Projects, they make a project taking care of it.
They're not going to be excluded.
They're not being excluded.
Put it in the energy plan, but we can't put solar on them for whatever reason.
And, and just to go back with what you just said, at the high school in McApin, it, they would be carports?
Just at McApin, high school's going to be on the roof, McApin, there's one section.
Yeah, McApin is just going to go right in the parking lot. Right between that and the high school.
The senior lot.
The senior lot. Oh, on the senior lot, okay.
That's going to, it's a wrap. From the telephone pole, right in the senior lot.
So, okay, I'm visualizing this, so, at, at Wayne, at Wayne Hills.
Yeah.
Is, is that what I'm visualizing?
Yep.
Okay.
Stevens, as is.
It's in the senior, as a student parking lot. What kind of, uh, do you think could it take?
Yeah, well, that's a good question. He's right.
It's, it's a, it's a good ques, I, I don't want to say if we're hitting, they're driving 60 miles an hour and they hit it, it's, it's probably going to fall over, but.
It's in their student parking lot at Wayne Hills.
I don't want to say, yes.
Put it in the school parking lot?
Senior lot.
It doesn't, because it's like an overhang they park right underneath it.
Wow.
Yeah, they park underneath it.
Are you on Museum?
Yeah.
It's high off the ground for, like, buses and.
Absolutely.
But it's a big enough school where you want the solar.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I put over megawatt at the New Jersey State Police Facility, right? And their sole purpose, they didn't care about the energy savings, they didn't want to take snow off the cars and whatever. So all the police cars piled under the, the sort of carports, so they don't have to pile the snow off, and then they could just get in and out.
Makes sense.
So it, it, whatever, yeah, whatever, whatever their need is, is what we've got to do.
That's what I want to do for buses.
How's that going to be for our plow guys?
Go to the schedule, Greg.
Yes, that question to Chris, Chris is here.
So, so Chris, how's it, when we put that in the, the solar panels in the senior lot, how's that going to be for the guys when they're plowing?
It's going to make it a little more difficult, but it's, it's not a big issue.
Yeah.
Right now, they just plow lengthwise all the way down, they'll have to go both ways to get around the poles. And we may lose a couple of parking spots where the supports are for the solar panels.
We can afford to lose spots.
We can afford it wherever.
$200,000 worth of controls or unit vents.
Any, I, I don't want to stop, if there's any other questions on scope, please feel free, solar, anything.
Unlike the cogeneration at the high school.
Yes.
The natural gas would be the source.
That's true.
Would there be enough power after the power failure?
No, so, so the, the way that the cogeneration works, you size it off the thermal, your heat load. So to size the full building for that, it would be astronomically huge, the economics would make sense. So this is just a, a small, small unit, just to, to pick up a couple of pumps and mechanics. But in theory, yes, you can absolutely pick up a full building with a cogeneration system.
So kind of just looking, this, this is our, our last slide, really, but just want to kind of paint the picture of where this project started. I guess, for, for Chris and Barbara, that was a while ago, but with ESG, we had our kickoff meeting on March 5th, really where we started to take the deep dive, find out the pain points of the district where they needed help. Went through a bunch of workshops, just having conversations with Chris and Barbara and the district and their staff, seeing where they're at, and then, like we talked about, Chris said the energy savings plan is done. So as part of the ESI process, this third, third-party, the energy savings plan is the overall project of everything we've investigated to this point.
It's that binder.
It's that, the big binder that's going to say, all right, we've investigated everything at every school, here it is. So a third-party review is done by the, the associates, and they're going to verify our, our energy savings calc, pretty much at the project that we're proposing is okay by them. So then, once we receive that approval by the end of this week, we're then going to send that on to the VPU to review. So like, like Chris said, the Board of Public Utilities reviews everything in whole, they get copies of all the documents, and then that's the final sign-off before we can move forward. So that's really where the checks and balances in this ESI legislation come in. We're putting this project together, we put it together, and we're getting it okayed by two different references. So that's really, so all this work in the past six months that our team has worked with your team on is coming to fruition at this point and getting approved and reviewed. So that's really where we've been, where we're going, and then just tentative schedule moving forward, and if everything is, is, stays on track, you, we look to start installing lights there in November, second shift, obviously not interrupting any classroom, nothing when the kids are there. So this is really just a high-level overview of everything we've done to this point and where we're going, so I, I feel free to, to offer any other questions or clarification on any, on any.
So if we, if we approve this tonight, what, the next, the next step as far as financing and all that, what happens?
Okay, so if we approve this solar power agreement, which is on the agenda, right? Now, the ESI.
ESI, the ESI.
So the solar is on the agenda, that would be pending the contract agreement?
Right, so the contract is being reviewed now, the draft contract. So if you approve the, um, the concept of doing this, then we have to sign off on the contract, which has to, that's going to take away.
So essentially, you'd just be approving the, of pending contract agreement, the solar PPA provider to move forward. What we need direction with is, remember how Chris was talking about those two separate PPA rates? We need direction on how to tell the solar PPA provider to move forward, and how we can include the roof restoration or not, because it was 6.5 cents if we included the roof restoration in the PPA, or it would be 4.5 cents if the district was, so that's really what's up in the air as far as the solar, we just are looking for direction for that, and it, not, not right now, that can be discussed, but that's really what.
Just can't give it to you right now.
The question, the question, I think arises, is, of course, it'd be wonderful to get the extra $800,000. However, the $600,000 that we need to do the roofs, where would that come from?
Capital reserve.
Is it a doable thing for us, or?
Yeah, it's going to reduce your capital reserve, but you have capital reserve for situations like this.
I mean, we're getting, we're going to be gaining almost 200, you know, you know.
Yes, though. Do we, I, I mean, forgive, this is not my, my area of expertise whatsoever, but shouldn't we wait till the reviews are done before we vote on it, or we?
So, so the third-party review is in progress, I got, I got a report back from the third-party reviewer today.
Okay.
We're going to submit, it's, it's little things on, on, you use this efficiency in your count, just confirm this kind of a thing. We'll get an approval from third-party most likely by Friday of this week. The VPU gets two weeks to approve it. So they're basically going to just take our energy savings plan, they're going to take the third-party review, they're going to go through it as a cursory review and say, yes, this is a viable energy savings plan. Where we're at today, the thing where it's going to make difference is can we get more scope into the project today? That's what we're trying to do. How, how can we spend that $800,000? And, and the urgency from our side is we have subcontractor pricing. We have, you know, we're looking to do lighting in November, so the more that this slides, the more that everything else.
Big slide, okay.
And I, what I get news about.
We have to make a decision.
So we, we got firm pricing from contractors to do this work for $70,000. They come back and say, well, you slipped, we're not doing it this month, we have to do it this month, we have to do it 3x a percent now, 5x a percent, because price went up, this one up, ours went up, that's, that's just.
So is, is, the review is, that's okay, I can, I can be, I don't need to be seen in the camera. So the review is just a formality, so to speak?
It's just, it's just legislative, you just have to go through the legislature.
They're, they're making sure that everything we put into the energy savings plan, because that is scope of work, is okay.
So we, we shouldn't anticipate you coming back to us saying, uh, we, we, oops, you know, oops, we made a mistake, and this is going to up, you know, be.
I've done, 30, 33 projects, over $200 million, not ones come back yet, so.
And there is a final vote at the August meeting.
Correct.
That's true, too, right, okay, yeah, that's true.
If it fell apart, they're, they didn't even get to that point.
Right, let's hope we don't get it, all right. Steve?
I just want to confirm an unpleasant fact. These are Chinese solar panels, not US solar panels.
So there are tier-one panels in the spec, we, we include tier-one, there is a by-American clause, um, we, we haven't got submissions on the panels yet, because we haven't entered into a contract, but we'll absolutely know what panels. In our bid specifications, we require tier.
Your estimate for this?
For, for the solar, the solar has been bid, that's been an actual bid from a contractor, that these are, these are contract repricing, tier-one.
I just said that, Steve.
Other people are saying that, so glad you asked, Steve.
Well, so, and, and you're, you could be right, I can't say yes or no, because they haven't given us some mittels. What I know, because I, I work with a lot of these solar partners, a lot of them stop by the panels.
Yeah.
So two, three years ago, when they do these towers, they bought warehouses and warehouses and warehouses for panels. Buying in bulk like that, they're able to get pricing so cheap, that's why you've got such a good rate. I don't know if they bought it from China, if they bought them from wherever, but.
But they're, but they're.
The ones that are more.
They, they own it, it's not.
It's theirs.
It's not ours, it's millions, it's theirs.
People are still buying like, to see if there's sense in work.
So I, I think, I think the bigger, the biggest question here is, do we want to finance, well, I guess, the biggest question is, this is something we want to go forward with.
Right.
So maybe we should go around the table here and see before we, because we do have a, we do have a resolution on the agenda tonight for this. So, I mean, Steve, are you willing to, maybe you can, as we go around, are you willing to go forward with it, and how do you want to go forward? Putting our money out, or?
Absolutely, we should move forward. If, I mean, there are a lot of things in here in the projects that make sense, in particular, the ventilation question, that's just a no-brainer, we need to do that. No reason not to spend less money on lights and electricity and so on and so on, I mean, really, it's a no-brainer, it's how do you finance? And, uh, you may remember, we voted a half a million dollars more into capital reserve a month ago. I recommend that we go with the $800,000, we've got the capital reserve. We save more money, we get more forward, so that's, that's mine. One, we definitely should do it, and two, I recommend we do it out of capital reserve.
Good morning, kids.
You know what, I'm going to, I'm going to move back to my seat, so that, because we're.
Okay, why don't we go to Kate next? I'm, I'm just going to go around and get your pin, I, I want your input as you go around. We're not voting on it, I'm just trying to.
And it might generate more questions, so we have Chris and Greg here to answer anything.
Yeah, I want to do it while you're.
Well, so the only question I have is, tonight, what we're actually voting on is to be in, in a contract with energies, right? That's what this, and to move forward with the timeline, that's really what the vote is.
The resolution.
The resolution is to enter into an agreement with the solar power provider.
Yeah, I absolutely, yeah.
And if you do that, then you're basically agreeing to go forward with the ESI plan.
Right.
Because, and that was something questionable when, when we first, um, went through this whole process, like, we could tell them, thanks, but no thanks. And then you're sitting here saying, oh, yeah, we can, we can't do any of these projects, we're never going to have the money. Or you could do $500,000 worth, because you were able to put money into capital reserve.
I guess my only question, slightly uncomfortable, because I don't know these two fine gentlemen, and, you know, but my question that I wouldn't love to have to not ask in front of them, but I do, is, have we looked at other, like, is there something else better?
No.
If the answer's no, that's great, I am all for this, I think we should spend the reserve, it's awesome, but I typically have a thing in my own home, when I do big projects like this, I always get three estimates. Have we met with another company?
Everything, no, everything is bid.
Okay.
So they were, they won.
Got it.
We had five companies that, that submitted.
Okay, I get it, sorry.
And so now, this company that, for the solar, they provided a bid, we had five companies that bid.
Got it, so they're the best.
Yes, so we're willing to hang it down.
So, for, for you, from a board person, Steve and myself.
Yes.
We sat with Barbara and Alex and Chris.
In the committee and did all.
And we sat through those few hours of presentations.
Why, other, it wasn't this, this.
And all they did and everything.
Right, exactly.
Awesome, so then this would have my full support.
And has, are you looking to the money, or?
And I would want to do it with the roof restoration, yes.
But taking the money out of capital?
Capital reserve.
Red?
Yes.
And, the money out of the capital improvement?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes, with the, um, roof restoration and half the $600,000 covered by the PPA.
Oh, you want the other way around?
Yeah.
Will? We're not voting on this.
I know, I know.
I'm trying not to do backflips, I'm so excited. Yes?
We'll hold you.
We can say thank you.
I will be voting yes to the resolution, and I would support taking out of capital reserve.
Nicole?
Yes, same, move forward and take it out of the reserve, I think, long-term, having all those other projects in there is total positive for the district.
Dave?
Yeah, yes, moving forward on the project, and Barbara, how much we have in capital reserve now?
I think it's a little over 1 million.
1 million.
Yeah, out of the capital reserve.
And Debbie?
Yes, yes, and I'd still like to see the list.
We're going to get you the list.
Thank you.
We're going to get you, well, now that you're going to add the roof restoration, the list is going to get a little bit bigger.
Well, I have plenty of time to read.
I, too...
Excuse me? I thought you were going to say that.
I, too, am in agreement with taking the money out of the capital improvement because it's going to widen our scope. And it sounds like we're in a good spot as far as that goes. I want to really thank you guys for coming out. And it's, but the big thing I think people need to understand is, yes, this is a savings, but it's a savings. It's not like we're going to get a check in the mail. Because that's something that I have in a conversation that we've had. It's a big savings to us, but it's not money where next, come April, and we're doing our budget, we can say, "Okay, well, we're going to use that savings to offset the budget because it's a savings, it's not a check that's coming in the mail."
And I was just saying, just to end, for me, I'm a new dad to this whole process. So, for me, I look at this as, it's a learning environment for the students. We're investing in the students for them to get a better education, to make better members of society. You're going to get a better light school, comfortable...
The heat ventilator. You have me in the classroom.
And if I could add one more thing, they also have an educational component, so they'll work with some of our high school students, and the kids will be able to see firsthand.
Fantastic.
Green club and stuff like that. So, it'll really be a good environmental experience for the students.
That's even like a bigger...
And no, Will, you cannot go back to high school.
He wants to volunteer.
You hand me a hello. Yes, Steve, I'm sorry.
There's one other thing in here that they sort of discussed, but I just want to point it out. Three more roofs, we don't have to talk about again.
Right.
Thank God.
That's another thing on the list. You've got it.
Which is the only disappointment, that why we can't put it on Macabre.
It's not structurally sound to do it.
I mean, we don't want to come through the roof.
Yeah, we don't want to.
We're Westbrook. Can't do it here either.
Yeah.
Can't do it here, you can't do it.
The way the building is set up.
Well, I thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you guys very much.
I have a feeling we're going to see you again, but thanks, I see you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dr. Anamon, you're on the air.
Should we recess? Consider, there's Eagle Scouts that were outside that were told to come in. They're not here.
They're not here yet.
They were told to come at 7:30.
Okay, wait, wait.
Oh, you take a break?
Yeah, 10-minute break.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess and restart.
I just wanted to show you something, yes, if I go on stage, can I say her name? Yeah, because she's sort of mathematically nice.
Right, not only that, but it's just a little... The other thing to do is, tell Barbara now that you're abstaining on that one, she'll say. And then you can tell her when you vote, you vote yes, except for the abstentionary.
All right. Let me just tell her.
I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Dr. Anamon is going to do his report.
All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July meeting. I'm going to start, we have two Eagle Scouts from Troop 114 that are here to be recognized, Connor Partington and Dylan Bednarski. So, first up, I'm going to ask, I have certificates, little plaques here for both boys. But I'd like Connor, if you want to come up to the microphone and tell us a couple of words about your project. I know we've all seen it, even if you didn't know it was Connor's, it certainly is. And so, Connor, just share with us what you've done to earn your Eagle Scout.
Yes, hi. My name is Connor Partington.
Is that on?
Is there a...
There you go.
So, my name is Connor Partington, and I completed my Eagle Scout project in front of the main office. I completed a 10-by-20 storage shed for the band to house off-season sports equipment and props that were currently being stored inside the high school and were causing issues. So, my project alleviated that, and with the help of Mr. Kelly and the custodial staff and Dr. Anamon, I was able to complete my project this November and get my Eagle Award this past month. So, that's been very exciting.
And we have all seen it, and it looks wonderful, and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for clearing out that area.
So, this is a very professional-looking shed right outside the main office, right adjacent to the parking lot. Hardy board siding, I believe. It looks like it's a million bucks. So, I have the certificate of recognition, Connor, for outstanding achievement and exceptional leadership ability, as evidenced by your attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you.
And Mr. Bednarski, can you do the same?
Hello, everyone. My name is Dylan Bednarski. And for my Eagle Scout project, I did an informational kiosk over by the Oak Ridge Reservoir. I know, mine isn't as close as Connor's, so some of you may not have seen it. So, I brought a picture with me, if you would like to pass it around. So, for my project, I worked in conjunction with the New York-New Jersey Trails Commission and Newark Watershed in order to build a new informational kiosk by the Oak Ridge Reservoir to display fishing and boating regulations and general information regarding the reservoir. The old kiosk that had been in place was knocked down by various vehicles either backing into it or just weather damage in general. So, with my project, I hope to build a more longer-lasting and durable kiosk so that everyone will know the regulations and be able to keep a sustainable environmental area for years to come.
It looks nice, you have a glass, it's enclosed, right?
Yes.
Perfect, very nice, great job.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dylan. On behalf of the Board of Education, I have a little plaque for you.
Isn't scouting great?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
It's so talented.
Shave this plug.
We are very blessed.
It's a great scouting community, as you always say. So, thank you to Troop 114. Next up, we have our district HIB grades. This is a part of our self-assessment every year. It's a year behind, so this is for the '17, '18 school year. So, we're already into the '19, '20 school year, so we just got these back a few weeks ago. So, the score, once again, is out of a maximum of 78. It's a weird kind of a number to have as a maximum, but the maximum is 78. High school scored a 73 out of 78. Apshur was 75. Macabre was 71. Maple Road, 77. Marshall Hill, 74. Paradise Knoll, 74. UGL was 74, and Westbrook School was 75, leaving us with a district grade of 74 out of 78. So, we did very well. Again, this is one year removed already, so. And lastly, we have announced last month, at our last board meeting, that I thought it was time to reexamine the Macabre School, the current grade configuration, which is 7, 8, and investigate whether it's feasible to have it as a 6, 7, 8 middle school. So, we announced at the June board meeting, we sent a notice out to the community, staff, and parents. I think word's gotten out to the community beyond those groups. So, we've had some, we asked for volunteers to serve on the committee. We've gotten a bunch. We're going to be getting back to everybody next week. So, just to brief the board now, we're going to be starting in September, but the, you know, the purpose of the committee is to determine if it's possible to move the grade 6 to Macabre School. Terry.
Who is on this committee? I mean, are all stakeholders involved in the committee? For example, faculty, staff, the union, everybody involved?
Correct. There's going to be parents.
Okay.
Yes, stakeholders. We even have some people who are, I guess, just citizens, residents of West Milford, who don't have children in school anymore, but maybe they did years ago, who volunteered to serve in the committee. So, it's a pretty big cohort of people.
Okay. And we're going to be breaking it down into separate subcommittees.
Right.
So, it is, we are going to be using quite a large portion of the people from the community to get feedback.
So, just to reiterate, we're going to determine if it's possible to move the grade 6 students to Macabre for September of 2020. If it's not possible, obviously, we, no further actions needed. If it is possible, we have to determine, you know, should we do it? Do we want to do it? So, it's, can we do it? And then, should we do it? We'll have to look at that. And lastly, we want to make sure, you know, we just had a nice solar presentation, they talk about cost-effectiveness and cost efficiency. It has to be cost-neutral or positive. You know, it can't cost us money. I think if it's going to wind up costing us money, it's really a deal breaker right off the bat. It could be neutral, or it could potentially save us money, depending on a lot of factors that we really haven't looked into yet. So, we do have a large number of volunteers. We're going to contact them next week to let them know. And just to break it off into more manageable pieces, we've created six subcommittees of the committees, of the committee. One will deal with academics, one will deal with master scheduling, one will deal with social and emotional learning. There'll be a transportation component, facilities component, and a fiscal component. So, people who will volunteer will be sort of assigned to one of six subcommittees that will begin meeting in the fall. So, hopefully, we can have this done exponentially in the fall with a recommendation to the board for January. So, if in fact, we do make this decision, or the board decides to move the 6th grade to Macabre, we have some time to do whatever we need to do prior to September 2020.
Could you repeat those six subcommittees, please?
Yes, academics, master schedule, social, emotional learning, transportation, facilities, and fiscal.
Thank you.
So.
Now, I just want to comment on that also, is that each board member, we're going to have different board members sit on each part of those committees. We're going to be more of an ears there. It's really going to be, everything that's going to move forward is going to come from the committee itself. But the board members are going to be able to sit in and get some of the feedback from the community so that we have an understanding of their concerns, the positive and the negatives. So, that's why we're breaking it down. So, any of the board members who are interested, I mean, I would hope everybody would want to do it. Maybe we could even rotate and not sit in on just one committee. Maybe we could sit in on more than one so that we get a feel of what the community is looking for.
Good idea.
Is there anything else, Dr. Anamon? Thank you. Mr. Novak is away, and no report, and special reports and correspondence, Mrs. Francisco.
We have the board minutes from June that need to be considered and approved.
I need a motion.
I move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain also.
On June 18.
June 18, is it the same one, Mrs. Novak?
Both.
Oh, okay.
I wasn't...
All right, next, president's report. While we're in July, I can't believe that I'm talking about graduation, but I didn't, we haven't mentioned graduation. Graduation and Macabre's promotion both went off beautifully. I have to say that even though we were very disappointed that we had to be inside and that we couldn't use the new bleachers, it was one of probably the best graduations that I've ever been at. It was so, it moved along very nicely, the speeches were wonderful. I feel that the community felt very welcome in the building, and congratulations to the class. It was very well-attended, and I just want to thank all the staff and parents for attending, and the administration did a great job, and I want to say thank you. And that would be all I have for my report.
The, I want to know if you guys discussed potential changes to award ceremonies in elementary school, what...
We didn't look at changes, they just wanted feedback on how everybody felt about how we did the awards this year. If you want to talk about it under all business, we could. Okay. Public comment? Just as a note for the public is, we now have a sign-up sheet that's at the podium, and if you're going to speak, we would like you to sign in with your name and address. If you could do it prior to the meeting, that would be wonderful, but it is there so you can do it when you come up to the podium. This portion of the meeting is open to the member, open to members of the public for the purpose of addressing resolutions on the agenda only. Members of the public who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be recognized by the chair first. Each speaker will be given five minutes for a period of 30 minutes, and then, time permitting, other public comment, limited to five minutes per speaker, will be allowed until the 30-minute time period transpires. All members of the public speaking during this public comment period are asked to address topics listed in the agenda. All speakers are asked to sign the register provided and to give their full name, spell their last name, group affiliation if appropriate, and provide their address. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and respectful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged. The board and the administration will not respond to them. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded to them by the laws of New Jersey. The board is not responsible and is not liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments. Members of the public are reminded that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Is anybody wishing, is anybody signed up?
No.
Does anybody wish to speak?
Seeing none, I move we close.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, I just want to have a couple of quick edits to the agenda before we move forward. On page eight, personnel, student affairs, number, motion number, resolution number eight, we're going to pull from the agenda tonight. We do not need to vote on that. On page nine, personnel, student affairs, resolution number 14 is a typo where it says, "At the annual salary of $33,850 without health benefits, not with," as a part-time employee. And on page 12, personnel, student affairs, resolution number 28, Law and Rembrandt Assistant Track, Step A. The dollar amount is correct, the letter is incorrect. It should say A, not B. Move to approve the agenda as presented and amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Education, Mrs. Dwyer.
Okay, move to approve items 1 through 11 on under education.
Second. Any discussion? If not, roll call, just a second.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Personnel, Mrs. Fritz.
I'd like to move items 1 through 40, plus the hand carry.
One is...
Just one.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right, sorry about that. Move item number one.
Second.
Any discussion?
It's just one.
It's just one.
Just one, first. Okay? Any discussion? No.
No. Yes, rather.
You do, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that I support this resolution because I'm happy that there is a superintendent that actually has been here for longer than two years, that isn't an interim superintendent and isn't a part of a carousel of changing superintendents. I think that the board over the last four years has made an important step to recognize that need and has fulfilled that need with a superintendent that does communicate with the public and is responsive to the board. So, thank you, and I support this resolution.
Any other discussion?
Could you ask specifically if any members of the public want to comment on this?
Is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on this motion?
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Absolutely.
Mr. Garino?
Abstain.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain.
Motion carries. Now, Mrs. Fritz.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I would like to move items 2 through 41, including the hand carry, and removing item number eight.
Nine? Is it nine or, oh, eight, I'm sorry. Reading is not most strong.
Second.
Discussion?
Sorry.
Does anyone have any comments on any of the motions? If not, any discussion?
Hold up this law.
Did you say through 40?
And the hand carry, 41. Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain on 27 and 40, yes, 2 through 26, yes, 28 through 39, and yes on 41.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes, except for 27, abstain on Mia Mezlanik.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Okay, yes, well, I abstain on motion 32 and 40, and yes for the rest.
Operations, Mr. Formio?
So, just like to move motion one.
Second.
Right of one.
Discussion? This is what we just...
Had discussion about.
Yeah.
Do we need another? Shall we discuss the discussion?
Discuss the discussion.
If not, roll call.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes, and I want to thank Mrs. Francisco and Dr. Anamon and also Mr. Garino and Mr. Drew for all their hard work.
And Chris Kelly.
And Chris Kelly for all their hard work on putting this whole thing together. I know it was quite an undertaking and it's definitely going to benefit our district, so thank you very much.
Okay.
Under Operations Finance, move two through 22.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like to say thank you to the Westmoreford Education Foundation for the donation. They saw that on their funding for a new, desperately needed scoreboard and I'm glad that their name will be on it.
Should we now have a copy of that section?
I believe it was up on the website.
Good, okay. There is a picture of the new scoreboard for McApin.
Did everyone get to see it?
Yeah.
I might have one here.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, oh, Mr. Drew, go ahead.
I have a question. We're about to start work on the paving and the.
It's already started.
So, that must mean we have a contract?
Are we in this motion right now?
No, it's operations.
No, it's not on the agenda.
Two through 22?
Do you want me to bring it up under?
I thought under new, maybe under new business or old business you could, so we can have a discussion then. We're almost there. Any other discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Like to move item number 23, under Operations Finance.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. So, each person will vote for themselves and then? Abstain for yourself.
Abstain for yourself.
Thank you. Because it says vote for self.
Your vote is to abstain.
Got it, got it.
Any other discussion?
I was like, are you kidding?
Mrs. Francisco, yes, it does read that one.
Thank you.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Abstain for myself, yes to everyone else.
Mr. Drew?
Abstain for myself, yes to everybody.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Abstain for myself, yes to everyone else.
Mrs. Fritz?
Abstain for myself, yes to everyone else.
Mr. Garino?
Abstain for myself, yes for others.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Abstain for myself, yes for others.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Abstain for myself, yes for everyone else.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain for myself, yes to everyone else.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Abstain for myself, yes for the others.
Like to move item number 24, under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Discussion? If not, Mrs. Francisco.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Like to move item number 25, under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Like to move item 26, under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Abstain.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain.
Like to move item 27, under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Francisco?
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Abstain.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Abstain.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
I abstain.
Like to move item number 28, under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Mrs. Francisco?
I feel like I'm missing a page here.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Garino?
Abstain.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
I'd like to move item number 29, under Operations and Finance.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, Mr. Drew?
I couldn't find it. Posted after.
You couldn't find the list of bills?
No.
They're right here.
The transfer.
Transfer of funds.
They're in here.
It came in our packet.
They're right here.
Oh, he gets everything electronic.
You have a packet. I left a manila envelope probably inside there.
It's right here.
No, it was online. Could you come back to me?
Sure.
Okay, transfer of funds. Mr. Garino?
Yes.
Mrs. Romeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Seidowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Ofchinsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Dyke?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garino. Community reports and liaisons, parks and rec.
No report.
Safety, there is no report, no meetings over the summer. Superintendent roundtable?
No report, resume in September.
The State County School Boards, there's no report because they don't meet during the summer. New Jersey School Boards, we will be reviewing our Board's self-evaluation on September 24th meeting, so, and if anybody hasn't done it, please do it. Thank you. Not that I was singling anyone out.
Voice off the camera.
Kathy Hello will be here to just go over that with us and probably, I believe there's going to be a discussion too about our.
Workshop? Of the strategic plan.
Our strategic planning, so there will be some discussion about that. Legislative, well.
That's September 12?
That's September 24.
24.
The 24th.
Okay, as of July 19th, the superintendent's cap has been officially removed. On July 17th, the Supreme Court, New Jersey Supreme Court, in a split decision affirmed that requested student records may not be disclosed under Oprah even if personally identifiable information is redacted. I'm going to go through the list of bills signed by Governor Murphy and just give the topics if anybody is interested. You can find them on the School Board Association website. One that includes information about sexual abuse and assault awareness and prevention education, prevention education and child trafficking awareness and prevention. There is an endorsement requirement for health and phys ed teachers grade K through six. A child abuse hotline requiring boards of education to display information about children and families state central registry information. The new anti-bullying task force legislation that is going to examine and evaluate the anti-bullying law and another one that's important is Youth Suicide Prevention Awareness Month has been declared in the month of, not mentioned in this bill. Okay, but that is another law that's been passed.
What law?
It's now a law because it was signed by the governor. Anybody have any questions? Comments, jokes? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garino? Technology, is there any report?
There is no report.
Okay, Township and Board of Education Joint Committee, Mrs. Romeo?
We met with the mayor in the beginning of July about the Hillcrest property and I believe Mrs. Francisco, we're going to list it for sale? Is that what we're going to do?
Yes, it currently is. Public notice was placed in the newspaper about a week or so ago. We actually have a walkthrough for any interested party. So far, I've not heard of anyone asking to be part of that walkthrough. That's tomorrow, scheduled tomorrow at 10 o'clock, I believe.
Thank you.
I have a question. Would we be able to request specific information about the building to any potential vendors that we've come across?
I think they give the information.
Or should they get in contact with your offices if they have questions?
Yeah, I mean, there's a public notice in the newspaper and it's on our website also under RFPs and bids. If someone is interested in purchasing that building, they should go through the proper channels.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Casa, Mrs. Remo and Mrs. Fritz, was there a casa?
Not in July, the next meeting is August 12th. I guess just the only thing to mention is that Mrs. Rebecca Stumpf is moving out of district and I think they're trying to find a replacement, but I don't think that they have yet.
They are trying to find a replacement. Have they advertised?
I'm not sure. I wasn't at the June meeting, but were you there, Kate?
Yeah, and she had just given her letter.
She'd just given it at that point.
Something like that to the meeting, so she also resigned from the county nurse position.
Oh.
So, she was.
She's bigger.
Right, yeah, the county nurse position and.
She's moving.
Yeah.
Old business.
Drew?
I have a question, but were there any recommendations at all regarding those elementary schools?
About the, I think, I think the, the only recommendation that was made was, I had brought forward, remember we talked that maybe they shouldn't overlap because we all wanted to be able to attend them all, but they were very well received, the parents, staff, you know, they felt that it was more personal us coming to the building. It was very enjoyable for me. I don't, anybody, I think all of us participated in and I think it was really, it really felt more personable and I, and it felt good to be there with the kids. So, I think that that's, we're going to move forward right now, but the same type of.
The feedback was positive.
Yes.
Anything else under old business? Will?
I know that Dr. Anamon presented legislation to us that was being proposed. I didn't know if we were going to be moving forward with any formal rejection from the Board against that bill?
About that bill?
Yes.
I think we're going to.
I did speak with Mr. Brown about it.
The consolidation statute?
Correct.
Doesn't apply to this county.
Okay.
So, it's not an issue for us.
Okay, great. Take that off of old business.
There are two former habits in the county and that's the way they've defined it.
I think they're looking at the more rural.
Warrens and Kaymakes and Burlington.
Starting off with, you know, the Sussexes and, right, those counties and then my guess is moving from there to the rest of the state, so. It may not apply to, say, right now, I think if it goes through, it could eventually, you know, move to the entire state, so something that bears watching, in my opinion, anyway.
Mr. Drew, did you have a question about the paving?
Are we on English?
For an old business?
What does that make, is that old business?
Yeah, because it's been discussed before, so it's old business.
Yes, I do. I looked in the list of bills and did find everything. I didn't see a contract. Who's the contract lawyer?
We approved it a couple of months ago. It's a co-op vendor. I can't think of it off the top of my head. I could get the, I'll look in the minutes and see what I can find.
So, we didn't get competitive?
Right, mhm. We actually had land engineers come out to give us, to review the scope of work and to review the, yeah, the scope of work and they said that the price was very good.
Okay.
And it actually came in a few thousand dollars less than what we had originally thought when we budgeted it because once they did all the finite measuring, they, the contract that was awarded was a few thousand dollars less than what was budgeted.
Like that.
But that also kind of raises, we've got some contracts we can put out there in the Board Member section of the website and others.
This particular, the paving was talked about in our Operations and Finance Committee two meetings ago and the savings was mentioned by Chris Kelly and I thought the vendor was too also and I thought, well, Mrs. Francisco wasn't there, I believe Mr. Schultz was there with us. Right? Am I?
We can get, we'll get to the name of the vendor.
He was last meeting, this was about, you're like two.
And it said that they went over the overall cost on the different projects and the paving was a savings to us of like, I want to see.
Well, I'm kind of asking a different question.
It's about 30,000.
It's possible to put that contract out online, so.
Oh, you want it online, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There's no contract, it's just, the contract is with the co-op vendor. It's like, we're just using.
We'll get you the name, though.
I'm looking to see if I could find it right now. Is there anything else while we're looking for this?
No.
Mr. Seidowitz, under old business? No. You're okay with waiting for her to give that to you? You don't have anything else, right? Is there any other old business?
Seeing none, like the closed old business.[1611.12] Seeing none, like the closed old business.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business. Anybody have new business? Will?
I know that we are intending to go over our board evaluation in September, and I remember in committee meetings that some people can't make it. Is there any way that we could possibly change the date so everybody can be at that meeting?
I have the name of the vendor.
Okay, go ahead.
It's called Gordian, G-O-R-D-I-A-N. And the amount of the contract is eight hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Yes.
September.
Well, who isn't able to attend September twenty-fourth meeting?
Twenty-fourth. Was there something on the twelfth? Or am I making that up?
It's not Tuesday, twelfth. myself and Terry.
Twenty-fourth. Oh, yeah, okay. Well, those were, the reason I picked the twenty-fourth is that was an open date that Kathy had, and her schedule is fairly full already, and I wanted to lock in on a date so that at least we could have her here. I think if we're short two, I know it's not the most desirable, having not the full board present, but I think we need to just go ahead with it because of her time, because otherwise, we're going to be pushing it back, and then we're going to be starting these committees for Macabin, and I think our days are going to start filling. And September and October are busy months with the school, with back-to-school night and all of that. So, I think if, we really need to just go ahead and move forward. Debbie?
So, that's in addition to the meeting? So, that's going to be like, something like we did tonight? We'll be starting on an earlier note?
Yeah, I was hoping to start at seven o'clock if we would.
Okay.
Because I don't think we need more than, she didn't think that we needed more than a half an hour.
Okay, and that's a public, and that's a public part of the meeting?
That's public, yeah, that's public. The thirteenth is our meeting, is our committee meetings, Nicole. Maybe that's what you were looking for. No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at August.
You know, the tenth, okay, that's.
I thought we talked about September twelfth for the board evaluation.
Maybe that was in my head or something.
Yeah.
The twelfth is a Thursday, though.
Because back-to-school is pretty much every Monday, Wednesday, Thursday in the month, so it's a pretty tight month.
I'm away, so for some reason, it was in my head.
Committees and two board meetings, so.
Are you here for the twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth, I am. For whatever reason, I thought the twelfth was something, and I'm trying.
Any other new business? Mr. Drew.
I would like to welcome Dr. Andy Brown, that's fire.
I do, I wouldn't be a doctor if you go with permitted.
That was very nice. That was a motivational setting.
Yes, welcome, Mr. Brown. We are so happy to have you here.
I'm going to give him a round of applause.
I've been doing this a long time.
Congratulations. Welcome to West Milford again.
Called the honeymoon.
The honeymoon's over soon as he sat down.
Will?
I know that we've spoken in the past about engaging realtors, about coming up with a pamphlet about the school system, and I don't know what, under what committee that would be, but if we could kind of resurrect that idea.
There is some discussion that's been going on with Mr. Novak. Unfortunately, Mr. Novak's not here tonight.
Yeah.
He was putting some, I know that he's been gathering some information about the schools that our students are going to and where they, you know, where they are now.
Can we give him a deadline? Because this has been going on for quite a long time. It's been going on for two years.
Can we give him a deadline?
We'll get it done.
About us.
Yeah, about the entire school district. I know that that's a part of it.
It makes sense, though, to maybe wait and see what happens with the middle school decision, because then I think you would want to reframe that, you know, the way you write about that in a brochure that way.
That's the other thing.
It's like editing and whatnot, but.
Well, we could still compile some of the information ahead of time.
Who will?
Spring twenty-twenty or something.
Maybe by September, we could have some kind of rough draft. How's that?
We're in the process of collecting some information.
Does that sound good to you, Mrs. Dwyer?
Yeah, I would give them till October.
Well.
Just because it's the, it's the opening of school in September.
September is a very busy month.
Yeah, you got it.
A lot of it is, you know, when someone's looking to move into a community, how many teachers have master's degrees, how many, you know, things that are very simple, not necessarily where our students go to college, or how many young women go to college. That's also important.
That is important.
But, you know, we don't want our pamphlet to be about Harvard and Princeton. We want it to be about West Milford, you know.
But we want, we want, I think we want to paint a bigger picture than just test scores.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And I think that's one of the reasons for the, wanting to be involved and get a brochure